Good morning.
Five items on the public agenda, including four of you that want to come and speak about the future of Wichita. Item number one on the new council business agenda, transportation is looking for permit or approval to purchase software that would increase or improve data collection, help mitigate safety hazards. On page three, item number two, changes to the city code to reflect recent changes in state statute. This will be of interest to the mayor and council as it pertains to the suspension for unpaid driver unpaid citations resulting in driver's license suspensions. Also sets requirements for court clerk recording and also provides clarification in regard to convictions of those charged with drive while suspended, although they're eligible for reinstatement. On the non consented housing agenda, there's a request for HUD approval to remove 23 units from public housing to allow for the city to sell those properties. Page four, a couple of travel items, Councilman Blue Ball, Councilmember Ballard for a sister cities trip to Pahom, I shouldn't have even tried to pronounce it, to Lano Pahom, Mexico. And yes, it is.
Did you say that again? I'm sorry, I didn't get.
Mexico.
We have to have it, is this round trip?
It is round trip. Also for Councilmember Johnson to participate in a city to city conference in Colorado Springs, On page five, item number four, a contract amendment for Prock Wetlands. It would allow R D G planning and design to provide direct management services to Snyder Studios. Snyder was selected by a selection committee to serve as the project artist. Item number five is a design services agreement for water sewer and paving improvements in District Four. On page six, acquiring easement for improvements to West Street between Harry and Pawnee. That's item number six. Item number seven is a grant application that would fund improvements at Robert Thurman Field near McAdams Park. Item number eight is a public exigency request to increase the contract, excuse me, contract amount to facilitate the immediate purchase of van chassis. We've had issues related to supply chain and there's also been a price increase. So there's a need for an exigency or to declare an exigency, I can't pronounce that word either, and authorize approval for purchase. Item number nine, revised cost estimate submitted by Evergy in regard to the Northwest Water Facility Power Substation. Staff is requesting an increase to the purchase order. Item number 10.
Sorry, Dante.
Yes, sir.
Is that reflected in the, that's not part of the GMP contract that we have with Wichita Water Partners?
Dawn, if you don't mind.
Is it, or is this a separate expense outside of that?
It's a separate project outside of Wichita Water Partners contract, but it is included in the deal with, in, as our state call.
Okay. So it doesn't affect the GMP contract with Wichita Water Partners?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Item number 10, City Wichita received a grant to purchase electric buses, charging stations, and related infrastructure in May of 2022. This item would give staff the authority or approval to purchase the charging stations. Ninety percent federal funding, 10% local match.
So I have a question here, too. With the recent fire that we had of the electric bus, was that a Proterra bus and was that related to a charging station or was it just the batteries themselves?
Tanzen, Nicole.
I see.
Native.
That was a complete Coachworks vehicle.
Is that a Coachworks vehicle?
So what, it's a all electric battery, non Proterra.
Okay.
It was isolated to one of the batteries and the vehicle was not being worked on or charged at.
Okay, but not related to Proterra or their system?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Page seven, item number 12, it's a closeout for facade project at the former Henry's Building, which has now been redeveloped as by Wichita, Wichita State Tech as a niche culinary Item number 14 is a grant application that would provide more funding for our cultural funding program. I know Cultural Arts is excited about this opportunity because it would increase our opportunity to provide grants for operating, to provide operating grants.
Did you skip 13?
I did. Number 13 is a semi annual bond issuance, a thousand dollar purchase from Babardier Learjet. It's a regular ongoing bond issuance and purchase that occurs between City of Wichita and Babardier.
Help me better understand, I don't remember this in the past, I mean, is, is this on property that's on the airport authority or?
I apologize, Councilmembers, as you know Troy Anderson's out and I don't see Mark Elder or Tim Goodpast available, but I'll track that down.
Maybe between now and Tuesday, could you find out?
I'll track it down.
I mean, maybe it's just something simple, I've just never noticed it before.
Yeah, I'll track it down. Item number 15, first reading of a bond ordinance that would modify bond documents to reflect changes negotiated between Ehos LLC, JR Customs Metal, and U M B Bank. No items on page eight and that's all I have. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, any question for me or staff?
Just kind of a heads up, unconsented agenda, item number 12, I will be pulling and abstaining. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, we have a presentation today from park staff, Great Plains Nature Center staff.
All right, looking forward to it. They might have brought a couple of owls or something, I think we would be a little more attentive, but we'll go with Troy.
So I do have staff coming. They received an invitation that their portion of this starts at 11:30. There was Dee's invitation that she sent forward, so they thought they didn't have to be here until about 11:30. I have since called them and they are definitely on their way. I don't know if you guys would like to wait a few minutes, maybe five minutes, and hopefully they can get here and we can get their portion started. If not, we can reschedule for another time.
You have five minutes of it, dancing or?
I was just gonna say, can you dance?
I was gonna ask if you guys have any questions about what's going on this summer, anything about our programs. We got a lot of capital projects going on, there's just a lot going on.
So fortunately, yesterday we did install the cameras over at Ailey Pool and so staff is getting training on how to use it and we're getting excited about that portion being installed. But things are really, really busy and we have a lot of things just going on. So do you guys have any specific questions that you guys would like to cover?
Along with the cameras, you know, the issues we've had over Pawnee Prairie Park and some shootings last week, have we came up with a plan over there for some kind of monitoring system? You know, I think years ago I'd said on the east side, whenever you pull in there, there's a sensor light, anytime a car pulls in there, it illuminates, used to let officers know, hey, there's somebody in there. So I didn't know if we were looking at something because this weekend, you know, and I plan to go by there this weekend as well because to see if there's anything going on over there.
We had a quick meeting with Chief and kind of shared some of our interests and we do have some extra money left over from the project for, from the cameras. And so I think we're gonna look at adding some extra cameras on the east side as well.
It's one thing, you know, kids gathering around there, but then when there's six shots fired and a lot of homes in there, it gets a little dangerous.
Yep. You have your presentation?
Real quick, Troy, are there cameras being placed at McAdams as well?
Yes, there are.
Are we waiting until they come in?
Are you talking about for the new building or are you talking about for the swimming pool?
The swimming pool.
They're on the list, but they're probably third or fourth on the list.
Okay.
So we definitely wanted to get Eli in first.
Okay, thank you.
So five items I've been able to say. This was a really interesting piece of research that we were able to partner with Playcore. They're looking at a whole system in regards to finding out how many people are actually using our parks. And so we have some really great data and information, but the way they do that is they actually track cell phones within parks. And from that they have some other kind of ways to look at the numbers and see where the numbers are coming from. So yeah, it's pretty interesting. And then after that, Amanda and Elise, who's on her way, she will do a presentation of Great Plains nature center. So.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. So this is Katie Eddie, she works in our department doing all kinds of great things. And she is all about data, just like me, we're both data matters. And so we had this opportunity to partner up with Playcore and it's a pilot program that they're looking at in regards to putting that whole package together to sell this package to all kinds of parks and recreation, parks all across the country, so that they can kind of figure out who's using their parks, how many people are using their parks, when they're using their parks, and just really interesting data when you really get down into it. And then they have a whole other intersection in regards to how does it relate to growth, how does it relate to different demographics? So we're helping them come up with great ways to package it. In the meantime, we're getting the benefits of it as being one of the pilot departments. So there you go, Katie.
Thank you for the introduction. Troy actually touched on some of my background info here, but we worked with Playcore's data service lab to, to get our mobility usage reports from them for six of our parks. They use the community vitality framework as their evidence-based perspective and the seven indicators of a vital community are what's listed here on the right. And you'll see that throughout the report I just passed out. It's color coded throughout the report and how each, each graph kind of pertains to each of those indicators. So we did select six parks for this pilot program, so we picked one from each district. And these reports give us pretty useful information, like how many people visited the parks, how long they stayed each time they visited, how often, the peak times for visitation and where visitors went before and after they were at the park. And just some quick info about how this data was found, it uses non-identifiable mobile location data that was observed within the boundary, that's where we set the boundaries for each park. It's detected as a visit if they're there for seven minutes or longer. And then there's a few charts that refer to the visitor's home location and that's just determined by where their phone pings most often during those nighttime hours. So here's a quick overview of each of the six parks and the information we got. We did use five years' worth of data from 2018 through 2022. We got this report in December last year, so the data we have only goes through November. But, but from this you can see how active each of these parks are. Pawnee Prairie and Harrison Park were the most popular of the six that we surveyed. So I'll just go into some of the specifics of the different outcomes that we saw, the observations we made, and how we linked the programming of these parks to the data that we were given. So first is Glendale Park. You can see here that September and October from 2018 and 2019 saw really big peaks. So we were able to tie this into our football programming that we had at that park. So you can, and that's the time of year that we had football. But then in 2020 during COVID, it was suspended, so you saw that drop off. And then we moved it to South Lakes after that, so it never quite picked up the same way as it was in those early years. You can also see from the most common timeframe being six and seven o'clock at night, when practices were held, after work, after school. So we were able to tell that from the data that it correlates to the football programming. And we can also tell that we had a lot of out of town visitors that were most likely part of those leagues. So we had Oklahoma City as the third most represented city, so it was really interesting that it wasn't another city nearby, it was actually from quite a bit away, and 5% from out of state. So it's telling us that people are coming here specifically to participate or to see their kids, to see their family members in this, in their football league. So it's just really interesting that we have so many people from out of town since so many of the parks that we surveyed. It was very heavily centered around the Wichita area and the suburbs. But even with football programming moving to another park, we can still tell that, that usage is increasing just slightly over the years. So you can see there, I drew a little line for where the average was in the more recent years, so you can tell that the, that it's much higher than it was in the, in the offseason. So while they had these big peaks during football, it, it fell off a lot during the offseason, but now it's, it's picking up quite a bit. And from this next chart, you can kind of see over here, there's the playground. So the heat map really shows that people are still visiting this playground, so even without the programming over here by the football fields, they're still using this park for other purposes. So you know, it just goes to show that just because one thing drops off a bit, people are still going out for many other reasons. Moving on to Harrison Park, the, the dog park was one of the things that we really thought drove the attendance here, most notably because you can tell from 2018 to 2019, visitation nearly doubled. And then it doubled again in 2020, even with the pandemic. You'd think that maybe people would not be going out as much, but with it being a park, they are still going out and just for that visitation to nearly quadruple in just two years, we really think that that dog park had a lot to do with it.
Do they still play rugby in Harrison Park?
Yes, they do.
So over here where the dog pens are, so you can really tell that it's, it's very heavily focused over here. So even though there's these walking paths, you can see a little bit people walking around, the dog park is really where, where people are going out. And, and that, that actually did contribute to Harrison Park being the most well attended of the six parks that we surveyed. So one thing that we think is that this, this points to the fact that putting more dog parks in throughout the city would be really beneficial both to us and to the citizens. So most of the people that were at Harrison Park lived five miles or less, that was 70% lived five miles or less. So the people are really sticking around to their home neighborhood. And right here you can see that the, the heat map shows just pretty much right around the park is where people are coming from, just from the east side. So if we put, if we put more parks on the west side, the south side, the north side, then, then people would go out and visit those parks. But there, the people probably aren't wanting to travel very far just to take their dog for a walk, it'd have to be a day of it basically to, to want to go do that. So the more there are, then the more beneficial it will be to those neighborhoods. So for Clap Park, we noticed a big difference in the usage when the golf course closed. So from 2018 to 2019, you can see there's a very distinguishable drop in attendance. However, an interesting thing was that the second most represented city after Wichita was Wellington. And it was pointed out to me that there was a golf league that came to Clap Park from Wellington. So I thought that it was interesting that it was such a big representation that it would be the second most visited city after Wichita because that you, it really, you don't see that with any of the other parks that we were looking at. So, and even with only a year and a half of data representing when the golf course was there, for that to be such a draw was just really interesting. And it also shows that our amenities are important. So this chart shows other recreational sites that people visited, who also visited Clap Park. It's kind of hard to say, but if they came to Clap Park, where else did they go, basically? And the Sedgwick County Park Boundless Playground, a third of Clap Park visitors also visited that playground. So I think that kind of just validates our plan to put a accessible playground into Clap Park in our master plan, because people are obviously wanting something like that if they're going out to Sedgwick County Park specifically for that. And again, amenities. So there, there is a disc golf course here now, and so you can tell that people are walking along these paths, they're using the whole course, it's, this is the parking lot up here, but other than that, it's, it's not really any one concentrated area where people are spending time at this park, they're all over it. So it just really goes to show that it's still being used even though it's no longer a golf course.
Funny, so it looks like that's where all my walls have extended up.
And then one other thing I wanted to point out from this report is that we have this chart that shows which week had the most visitors. So for Clap Park, it was October 9th, 2021. This happens to coincide with that year's candy crawl. So just the fact that that event had such a huge turnout that it was the most visited week out of five years' worth of data is pretty interesting. So if we keep planning events like that, market them well, it's gonna boost the visibility of our park system. Now for Pawnee Prairie Park, this one really showed the impact that COVID had on our park system. And this, this was kind of what we were expecting with a nature park like this, when COVID hit and people weren't allowed to go to all these different indoor activities, they were going to our parks, they were spending time outdoors. So from 2019 to 2020, you can see there was a 67% increase in visitors at Pawnee Prairie Park.
And about the same time we implemented the new playground equipment and stuff in there, too?
And I actually have that here in just a couple slides, but again, pointing out COVID, March 23rd, 2020, that week was when the COVID lockdown started and that was our most popular week at this park. And then yeah, here I wanted to kind of point out that even, so we had some improved paths here in 2019, which could also account for some increased usage. And then in 2021, we had the playground expansion. So, so even though COVID saw this big jump, it, it has, it has stayed that well attended since then. So yeah, I think that the playground really had a lot to do with that, that people got out, they saw what the park had to offer, and then they kept going out. And it also shows how, how this is such a regional park. So there's 148 different cities that are represented in park attendance and 42 states. So the fact that almost a third of all the visitors were from outside of Wichita is really notable. And just from anecdotal evidence, we've, we've heard from people that when they come to visit, this is one of the parks they go to, they like to take their kids, they like to take their dogs out on walks and just really get out and experience and enjoy nature. And again, here's a heat map, so this, this kind of shows the stark difference between this park and Harrison Park, how Harrison was so concentrated to the east side, but for Pawnee Prairie, while there is this little, this little dark spot here near the park, it's really representing from the whole region of people who are coming out to visit it. And then similarly for Swanson Park, another nature park, we saw doubled usage in 2020. However, it did sort of fall off a little bit after that. Again, this, this week was near the beginning of COVID. So yeah, here we can see how usage decreased again a bit after COVID restrictions let up, but probably just because there aren't as, as many amenities at this park. So once, once things normalized a bit, then people went on to, to do other things, to visit other parks that have those amenities. So we're hoping that if we were to run this report again, maybe we would see a little bit of a peak coming up this year after this, the new pedestrian bridge was put in, so maybe a few more people are going out and walking that weren't able to last year during those improvements.
Did you say you buy, you buy this from the phones or how, how, how exactly is this?
Yeah, so.
It's great data.
Yeah, so Playcore is, who provided these reports to us, and they work with the, the actual people who collect this data from cell phones. So if you have GPS turned on your phone, it's constantly pinging wherever you are. So you're able, they're able to pull that data, where all those pings come from. We can't tell who the individual people are, but, but we can see where the pings came in from, where the pings went after that essentially. So yeah, very interesting information that we're gathering from this.
Thank you.
A little bit, but they, they assure us it is completely unidentifiable and they can't tell any individual.
One inch, I'm sure.
So was there a recommendation other, response than other than just hoping that we put great ways in back? Because I didn't really see a focus opportunity like we see with the other.
Yeah, I think it's just because there aren't as, as many amenities at that park, it was really hard to get too much of a tie-in from there, other, other than the fact that it's a nature park, people get out and walk around there.
Right.
Did you have a suggestion?
Yeah, a couple things.
What was this? So we don't.
Trip on it.
So in general, you're seeing a lot more attendance at all the parks, even though this was a little bit of a drop off, I think, if I go back, let me see here. Yeah, so back in 18, we were at almost 21,000. And even with this drop off from COVID lighting up a little bit, we're still up at 30,000. So we're doing more than what we did previous years. They didn't necessarily give us a recommendation as to what we can do or what we should do in regards to attendance or the usage of the park, that's for us to figure out. But this is just great data, so we know who and when and how they're using our park. And in some cases, like this one and over at Pawnee Prairie Park, they're nature based and we don't want to get too much involved in regards to changing that. But there's other places like over at Harrison, we, you saw the dog park go in. Now this year, we put in the splash pad. It would be great to see what happens a year after the splash pad's put in, to see how many people are, are using that park. So a lot of different things, when you look at data, there's an interesting thing that you could take a shot in time and see what it looks like, but what is really beneficial is when you can see it over years and years and years. So, and, and this is actually old because we got this in November. So it'd be really interesting to see if we could pop this up again in November.
Swanson's only a mile from Buffalo, isn't it? Yeah, I mean, Swanson is truly a nature park and the footbridge loss for that period of time certainly had some question on the knowledge. But yeah, there's work to figure out what we might go with differently to help get amenities in the park.
Well, and yeah, it's not necessarily all about amenities, as I pointed out with Glendale Park, programming has a lot to do with it as well. So Amanda's gonna have a lot of really interesting information to share about the Great Plains Nature Center coming up, but I know that they do a lot of really cool events, like walking tours and they'll, they'll like walk along different parks and, and teach children, teach adults about the, the nature aspect of things, so that, that could be an opportunity there.
That's the question I'm wondering, Troy, with this not having a lot of amenities or a lot of other programs, why didn't we choose this park versus Buffalo or Sunset or even Prock? Because there we know there's some opportunities here, we don't know, can't be a lot of opportunities.
So we were only afforded six or seven sites.
Right.
And we wanted to get one from each district and we wanted to get one from a couple different types of parks. So the Great Plains Nature Center, I'm sorry, the Keeper was, was an interesting one, we wanted to see what that was like because that's our number one tourist attraction. We wanted to see what was happening over at Harrison because of the new dog park. We wanted, so we picked some different types just to see what we could come up with, just trying to be strategic in regards to different types of parks, not necessarily focusing on the same parks all around the city. This is a pilot, this was, you know, a gift to us that, that we got a very huge discount to get this data and information. So that's why we chose a couple of different ones.
Yeah, I totally understand that, all that, appreciate that, great. I'm just trying to, what am I gonna learn from this that I can apply to Swanson and make it better?
Right.
Otherwise. Anyway, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yeah, Ruben is, if you try, I'd love to see Watson, see what numbers are there.
Well, in Watson, I'd say I can get you some numbers for Watson because they're, because it is actively staffed, we do have a lot of data from, from the different rides, from events that are, that take place out there. So we do have a lot of information about Watson Park already, but it would be interesting to compare this type of data to the, the quantifiable data that we already have. But yeah, but moving forward, we are hoping to continue working with Playcore and getting, getting more information about more parks and Buffalo is on our shortlist. So hopefully we'll get some information about how popular that park is as well and with the splash pad there especially. Okay, and then the last of the six parks we looked at was Keeper of the Plains. And actually, so this was the first one that we, we tested and our partners were really fascinated by our peak being eight and nine o'clock at night, because in their experience, parks aren't typically that popular that late at night. But then when we pointed out the fire pots that get lit every night and showed them a picture of how cool it looks, they, they were really, it, it made more sense, it tracked with, with what our experience is out here. So, so yeah, the, around the time the fire pots are lit is when we see the peaks, you can see how each summer we see a peak out here and it decreased quite a bit during 2020, which I've got some more information about that in a sec. But the heat map definitely shows the actual statue is where the most people congregate. They can watch the fire pots from the base of the statue, there's a lot of informational signage about the Keeper right there. So people will walk along the path, stop and look, and then keep going. So we did see that it, it did drop off a bit in 2020, which didn't quite fit with our initial hypothesis that people would be getting out more, getting outside more during COVID. But then when you think about how, how that congregation right there by the statue, it kind of makes sense that people would be a little hesitant to be in such close quarters with a lot of people. And then also the fact that out of town travel was limited so much during that time and this is such a destination, people will come to Wichita, the Keeper of the Plains is one of our most notable features. So it would make sense that with decreased travel, we wouldn't see as many people out there. And so you can see from this, it's even more popular than some of the other places we looked at, 186 cities represented. A hundred and eighty-six cities represented, forty-eight states, we got almost the entire country coming out to check out The Keeper of the Plains, and a quarter of all visitors were from over a hundred miles away. So, so again, it's a destination, as well as one of our proudest features of the city. And so another thing is that we think that after COVID let up, people were really excited to get back to their routines, people were coming into the city a lot more. This weekly high here, May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, we were able to track that to being the weekend of the opening fireworks for Riverfest, when, when it was back to its full, full event. So we thought that was interesting, that, that we were able to tie that into that, being when it was most popular during those five years. And again, you know, after we saw the initial decrease, it picked right back up again in twenty-twenty-one, and then in twenty-twenty-two, with only eleven months of data, this was the highest-attended year out of the whole five years. So it's definitely gotten more popular over time. So as a whole, some of our takeaways was that COVID, one way or another, did affect how the parks were used. It increased usage at the more natural parks, where there's more outdoor space to, to have distance recreation, but then it decreased where we saw more travelers, where people congregate in small spaces, and where programming was a major driver of the park usage. So if we make more improvements, we add more amenities, we're going to see more people coming out to visit the parks, and that can then in turn increase our economic impact for the community by drawing in visitors from outside of the area. And I will take any more questions, if you have any.
Now, that question for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Speaking of Keeper of the Plains, next year is the fiftieth year of.
Yes.
Are there any refurbishments or additional things that could be done, or that we should be looking as a way to celebrate that? That was done as our, as Swanson's gift to celebrate the vice continuing in nineteen-seventy-six, what we did a couple of years early, just make sure it's ready. So just trying to.
So we, we put a committee together, and the committee has met once as to what we want to do in regards to celebrating the fiftieth, and we've already come up with some ideas. It's going to be, I mean, we have some time to come up with what we want to do, but I think we're looking at doing something on the actual day of his birthday, which I think is in May, I think it was, I think it's in May. So starting to plan some, some things together, and with the anticipation, hopefully, we can adjust some of our contract, maintenance contract, to actually do a little bit more there during next year, so it makes sure it looks as good as it possibly can.
Especially the exploration place and their amphitheater, that's going to be a construct. We can directly add it, and there's some great opportunity to really highlight that corridor, especially with the increasing use of kayakers ever seen. No, that wasn't my cellphone, that was in the middle of the air. Hopefully someone else's, but just seeing a lot of increased activity down there, too. Number one, in the J- W- Ch- T- O, just continue to celebrate it and improve it.
It's on every commercial, it's on tons of publications and whatnot. So the amphitheater probably is not going to be built in time for the, the birthday. And so that's another partner that we talked to as well. We're expecting Exploration Place to be part of the celebration as well.
We can get our stuff done before it's finished, and we're all going to end it.
All right.
This is really good data, I really appreciate it. And just like Councilmember Frye was saying, it, it provides us the chance to see opportunities. And, and, you know, whenever we come in front of the public and we want to make changes to our parks, and we'll have more data to substantiate that, I really like that instead of kind of shooting from the hip, and well, we think this will work, or that will work, we can analyze other parks and, and look for opportunities in certain areas. So I, I really like this data-based approach.
Well, two areas that we really think, or actually three, that just pops out to me is the dog park. The dog park at Harrison truly drove the tenants at that park, and I think we're going to see that once we get that at Clap and, and Country Acres as well. So we're going to see a huge impact with that. It'd be great to see a little bit more focus on splash pads and see how that kind of actually relates, and so hopefully, we can get some of that data in the future. We have to pay for this, and, and so we want to make sure that we do it in a way that is strategic, but also fits in within our budget. The other one was Glendale Park, and we saw that the usage with football there, and we have had some thoughts and ideas of bringing the league back to that location, and bringing some of those games back to that location. So it'll be really interesting to see how, how that works. And it, it's kind of exciting, but also kind of frustrating, because, and I could see it from, from your guys' reaction, is we don't have a complete set of data. We were only able to get six parks, and really kind of, this is a pilot, we're just trying to get this going, and this is really something that nobody else in the country is really having access to. I talked to a lot of my colleagues, and everybody thinks about an old-fashioned way of, let me get my clicker and see how many people are going down, down the trail, or is there a trail, trail cam that they can use to count? This is a huge, huge opportunity that hopefully will come down in price, but we were pretty lucky that we, they invited us to be a, a pilot of this and a partner. So if nothing else, this is just really great information at the very tip of the iceberg.
Sure, just a couple of thoughts and a question that I think I know the answer to, but just want to make sure. Regarding of The Keeper, just a, I'm famous for offering my unsolicited advice, but next year, it'd be cool at Riverfest to somehow celebrate The Keeper, so maybe working with Wichita festivals, because if it's in May, we could really get lucky, and it's during Riverfest, but even not, still just the same month. Thank you for this, I'm a data junkie, as you know, so I really appreciate this. The question that I think I know the answer to, but I just want to confirm, these are not unique encounters, right?
No.
Okay, yeah, because you would anticipate then, at a dog park, having higher numbers, because people may take their dog there three times a week, four times a week, seven days a week, whereas in another park, you might just go once a week, or twice a month, or whatever. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Well, let me make sure I understand your clarification. It's a unique daily count?
Yeah, but you're not saying, like, they aren't sorting out that my cellphone number went there fifty times in twenty-twenty-two? It's just the number of pings that are there? So if I went there fifty times, that's fifty pings?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All right. And the out-of-town folks as well, so it's kind of interesting to see how many folks come to Wichita. All right, moving on to our next presentation, we have Great Plains Nature Center. Amanda Alessi is here, and let me see if we could queue up her PowerPoints.
All right, good morning. I am Amanda Alessi, the Director of the Great Plains Nature Center. Thank you for letting me visit with you today. All right, so the Great Plains Nature Center is an amazing partnership with the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Friends of the Great Plains Nature Center, and of course Wichita Park and Recreation. And so these three agencies and the nonprofit have this common goal to, for the public, to provide opportunities for the public to investigate, understand, and develop an appreciation for wildlife and the environment, while promoting sound stewardship of natural resources. Our vision is to inspire stewardship of the natural world through exceptional experiences to benefit future generations. Here's one of those, monarch tagging. It's a great experience. All right, so we do this through kind of these five pillars. We have publications unique to the Great Plains Nature Center, we offer resources to the community, our visitor center, and our events and programs are kind of our bread and butter. So here's just a list of some of our publications that we have. Pocket Guides to Wildlife Things in Kansas, one of the best ones to take along on a hike is that Kansas Snakes, so you're not taking a big guide to snakes, you only want those that are in Kansas. We have a newly, new newsletter that is The Prairie Post, and then we just launched in January, a second GPNC Annual Guide. And so this is a way that we can get information about what the nature center is doing throughout the year, has our event calendar, our weekly programs, and all of the other resources that we have available. Discovery Boxes are a great resource that we have. There's a picture of one right there that, so centered around birds, or skinskulls and tracks, or reptiles, and teachers and scout leaders, or anyone can check these out for free, have them available to them for up to two weeks, use all those resources that are in there with their groups, and then return the discovery box. And let's go outside backpacks are something I wish we, I really want us to get those used more. So we're going to figure out how to get those checked out more. So those are available in our gift shop. Again, a free resource, you come into the gift shop at the nature center, say, I'd like the Let's Go Outside Backpack, and you take that on the trails of Chisholm Creek Park. It's got binoculars, and guides, and a nature journal, and cloud spotting frames, and all kinds of really fun stuff to just help you interact and engage with the wildlife in that great park. And then our visitor center, that includes the Coke Habitat Hall that's filled with hands-on signs here, you can see the wall of, of mammal furs. It's a great time you can touch a skunk, you know, see what a skunk feels like without the risk of touching a skunk. And our events, so as you can see, we have quite a few events. Our staff is about twelve to fifteen, employed by the various partners that we have here. Our next, we'll work it into that, our next event is going to be Moth Mania, the next one that we have out of the nature center. But our biggest one of the year is typically Walk with Wildlife that we just had in May, and we were really glad to bring that back after COVID, so it had been several years. And it was a beautiful day, and we had lots of partners come out and, and help us with that event. You could meet wildlife that you normally wouldn't get to see up close and personal. The Kansas Wildlife Exhibit came out and brought some animals as well.
Well, you got the Moth Mania, right?
Yeah, I know, right? So we got it, we got a good opportunity this year. It's been an adventure this spring. So I mentioned our, our bread and butter, the events and programs. This is a list of what we offer for school field trips and outreach, so schools can come visit us and bring their kids to us, and schedule a time with naturalists. Each class gets a dedicated naturalist that spends their time with them, going over all of these things. We also have outreach and virtual programs available, too. So we will take the animal and the program to the school if they're unable to visit the nature center. And we spent a lot of time during COVID, when we could not be doing in-person programs, we really dug into what our programming was, what we thought, you know, what does the school need? What are we getting from teachers of, of what do they want from programs from us? And what we did was we really honed in on the next-generation science standards, because that's what teachers have to justify to their administrators, if they're going to go on a program, what science standards are they addressing? And they also don't get a lot of time in class to address these. I'm, I'm shocked when my kids come home and tell me how much time they get to do science, and, and what that level is that they're able to accomplish in the classroom. So, so this is a real service that we're providing, and it's, and it's value, and it's needed. And so we really honed in and standardized our programs based on the next-generation science standards, and what those teachers were looking for from a program from us, while still providing really exciting experiences for those students, to get those hands-on learning experiences. And we also offer these weekly programs that are free, you don't have to register, you know, there's no registration or anything like that. So on Mondays, every Monday in the summertime, in June and July, is a creature feature, it's an auditorium program, you can show up and learn something new about an animal and get to meet it up close. On Tuesdays, we have a nature-based craft. Wednesdays is our storytime. These little guys are marching around the, the lobby, that's part of our critter tales. And Thursdays is outdoor play. This is probably one of my favorite programs that we offer, is really child-led, it's less, less curriculum, but just more, these preschoolers, three-to-five-year-olds, play is how they learn. And so just providing the space, and maybe the ideas and materials to help the caretaker guide that child along with nature-related things. So one of my favorite activities we did with that was build a fort. And so we provided sticks and logs, and the kids and the caretakers provided the creativity and everything needed to just kind of build a fort and have fun and play and connect to nature through that way. And what I really want to highlight is something we've been working on the last year or two, is this two-five-nine, USD two-five-nine high school water quality field trips. So this was, we received a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to provide aquatic education to Wichita Public High School students. And so they provided a grant, so that we were able to provide busing, transportation for all of these students to come see us, and we don't charge for any of our programs, any of the ones that we talked about before, plus these, we don't charge for. So with this program, it was really, what we did was we brought the students out, and we talked to them about what is a water watershed, why is that important? How do we study water quality? The students do research that is added to data collected, so we didn't have information or data on the water quality of our park, of Chisholm Creek Park, and we thought that was kind of important, maybe someday we're going to want to need to know that. How was the, the conservation efforts that we're doing in the park, how is that affecting our water quality? So we started a baseline, and we've been recording four sites along the east fork of Chisholm Creek Park. And so students are actually contributing to this data. We go out with them, we do the abiotic tests, they record the water temperature, air temperature, and, and, and water chemistry, so we test the water chemistry as well. So they're actually doing the research, recording all of that, and then once we've done that, as you can see here, we get them in the water. So we, we provide waders, and we provide D-nuts, those dip nets that they have there, and we get in the water with them, and we look for macroinvertebrates. So these are little bugs that you can see with your eye, that's what that means. And these kids had a ball, they had so much fun, and found all kinds of things. So we get them in doing that, and then they, we record everything that they find, and use an index to determine the quality of the water at, at that point in time. So we've had three-hundred-and-seventy-seven students come out through USD two-five-nine. We've had every high school, including Education Imagine Academy. I think Northeast Magnet is the only one that has not been out to see us yet, but we've seen all the other USD two-five-nine high schools, and this has been such a success that we've really expanded it. The aspect of the water quality and education, and what we're doing with these students, this very hands-on experience, we've expanded that to middle schools and other parts of our programming, where we're even doing the dip netting and the bentic macroinvertebrates with, with elementary school kids, because it is such a great experience. And this summer, what we're focusing on is another USD two-five-nine partnership with their summer field trips for middle schoolers. So over the four weeks in June, we will see every middle school, summer school program, and we expect to have over five-hundred kids come out to the nature center through this, through this partnership. And so while they are at the nature center for pretty much an entire day, nine forty to one-thirty, they get to experience these things. So those kids get to learn about archery, and they get to do it, and go on a guided nature hike, learn about frogs and light pollution, and have a human-impact scavenger hunt. So it's a really cool day for these kids, keep them active, keep them busy, and really just engaging with the park, and engaging with nature, and having that, sometimes it's an introduction for these kids to wildlife and to nature, and we just really want them to know that this is their park, and that they are welcome here, and that we want to see them come back. So in twenty-twenty-two, here's a record of, of our programming that we did. Our programs are, you know, again, we're bouncing back after COVID and all of that fun stuff, and we are on track to increase these numbers by the end of this year as well. And the same with volunteers. Volunteers were a little bit slower to come back. We're still having a hard time recruiting new volunteers, as well as our previous volunteers that had historically been with us. Some of them just still are not yet quite comfortable to come back out and interact with the public at the level that they did before. So we're still working through that, but we have a wonderful volunteer force. You can see here, this group of volunteers. You can see here, this group of volunteers is called TEERS, Team Enthusiastically Eradicating Rogue Species. And so that is a big pile of bush honeysuckle behind them. So they're doing a fantastic job. So our next event is our city crew event, we're partnering with the Riverside Tennis Center. And so that will be on July 15th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And so we brought in our partners, the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, they're going to have fishing clinics, so kids will get to go fishing. First 50 kids will get a free tackle box. We're going to make fish prints and we're going to do my favorite activity, build a fort. So I've got logs in my truck, we're going to bring them to the tennis center, we're going to build some forts. And the nature center is also going to provide guided hikes around the river. So really just an opportunity to get kids and families out in different parts of the city. So I mean, urban nature is, is all throughout our city. So it's not just at the Great Plains Nature Center or Swanson or Pawnee Prairie. You know, we've got a beautiful resource with our river and the river corridor. So I'm, I'm real excited to share that with, with people. And then again, our moth mania, it'll be a fun night.
All summer.
Nailed it.
Yep, yep, yep. So that's Friday, July 21st. This is one of the biggest things that's coming down the pike for us, our building repairs and renovations. So the building that is the Great Plains Nature Center is owned by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So it is a federal building, it sits on about eight acres of federal property. The, the operation and maintenance of the inside of the building is paid for by Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks. And the city, we provide the landscaping and, and parking lot care and, and things like that. And so the foundation is in need of repair. And so if I get all of this right and the numbers right, I'm going to read this statement for the building repairs and renovations, so I don't mess anything up. So the Great Plains Nature Center and Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks Building will undergo major foundation repairs and renovation to the exterior and interior of the building. Due to the sinking foundation, there have been major cracks in the flooring, sidewalks, and walls, creating hazards for staff and visitors. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has secured $11 million of funding from the Great American Outdoor Act, or GOA is what we call it, to put towards GPNC repairs. Currently, the estimated cost is approximately $8,436. The project will include foundation repair on the west and east wings of the building, interior and exterior repairs of the west and east wings, landscaping for stormwater drainage, and rehab of the GPNC Solarium, the observatory, the Bob Gress Wildlife Observatory. Construction is estimated to begin late 2024 or early 2025. And an engineering consultation walkthrough happened January 24th. Those happen periodically and we really don't have a nailed-down timeline until things start going. So the money won't be released until October of this year and, and until, until we get a scope of work out there and we can get bids, then it's, a lot is in flex until we know who we're working with. For us, as the Great Plains Nature Center, these are some things that we're thinking about to plan ahead for this, as difficult as it is with a moving goalpost. But communication campaign, so we're really going to target our communication with public, teachers, and stakeholders with the timeline and keep updated with that as we know that, that will involve building closures and programming information and clear signage around the building. We're also looking at adjusting field trips and other programs to be outreach or completely outdoors in Wichita parks during the time that we don't have access to our building. Some, some of our work, the nature center, you know, some of our work can be done remotely. However, you know, we will need some office space for meetings and possibly programming. And then of course, our animal ambassadors will need a home for the time that we are not able to be in the building due to this construction. So, you know, you were talking about the programming of Swanson or the, the data at Swanson and Pawnee Prairie Park and, and I did the same thing. So I, I program, I do walks in Swanson and in Pawnee Prairie and while that bridge was being built, I didn't do programs there. I'm going to go off, so. Yeah, any questions?
Related to that, are there any opportunities for the city to update or facility improvements of our operations and our programming while that is going on related to our CIB or our general operating?
So a couple of things that we're looking at, actually, we're looking at making some improvements to the park through our general fund dollars. This is David's operating funds and so there's some opportunities there to make some improvements to the park. We've also been talking about some other joint usage or joint opportunities for that whole area with our partners. We also kind of looking at over at Pawnee Prairie Park, the old building that's over there, that has an opportunity to use that as a second home for doing programming out there. That would normally be over here at this location and possibly we could move it over there in the time being. And so, so those are some of the things that we've been looking at. I say this all the time, is we have great parks, but what makes them even better is the programming that goes inside of it. And this is what happens when we get people out there to bring that programming out into our parks and, and we see people utilizing our parks even more.
Yeah, I just know that, that one exhibit inside the GPNC, that was probably 15, 20 years ago, maybe longer?
We're coming up on 30 years for that exhibit. Yes, so that is also something we are working towards. The GOA funding does not cover removal or reinstallation or storage of those exhibits, but the Friends of the Great Plains Nature Center, we're looking at this as an opportunity to potentially get new exhibits. As long as those exhibits have to come out, which they will, we might as well put something fresh and new back in. And so we're at the beginning stages of feasibility and, and you know, leadership is kind of determining what do we want that to say and, and our message with all of that.
Yeah, I'm really glad to hear that because I think this is an opportunity to be forward thinking and while that construction is happening.
Absolutely.
Fresh as well.
Yep, I'm looking forward to it.
I have a question and a request. Just curious, do you partner or collaborate at all with our childcare licensing team? I know that they're always trying to help the entities that they license find opportunities, field trips, educational opportunities to fulfill their curriculum. So it might just be an interesting lunch meeting for you all to have if you haven't already.
That would be good, that's not one that I'm aware of.
Yeah, so right here with the, it's on seventh floor in Public Works. Adrienne Lattis, the Director. We have about 13,000 kiddos that our childcare licensing team is responsible for overseeing. And, and I know the providers either at the homes or the centers are always looking for cool things. So even if they can't do a field trip, maybe there's something that can be given to them just to help them. So that's just a thought.
Thank you.
Yes, and then a request, you said that you need volunteers. If you could send me, my colleagues I think would probably also appreciate it, some sort of statement, I'd be happy to put it in my newsletter and to share it on our social media sites for a call-out for volunteers. Because people don't probably even know that you need them and so, you know, it might help attract a few. So if you could just send us something to put in it, that'd be fantastic.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Just to wrap up a couple of things, thank you very much. Awesome job. This information about the, the work on the building, this is probably the first time it's gone out. So I think you're getting some really fresh information. And, and again, this partnership with four different entities, I, I talk about this all the time, there's nobody across the country that does what we do with our partners. And it's a fantastic resource here in Wichita. And people from other places, when I bring them here and they see this, they get really, really jealous about the work that we do. Amanda's doing a great job out there, along with her team, they do fantastic work. And just to wrap this up, I really appreciate you guys listening to this information. Katie did a great job on her presentation. It, it, it gets me excited to see how excited you guys were about with the data. And that was just a tiny, tiny fraction of what could really be out there for us to look at. So hopefully you enjoyed the presentations today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Troy. Anything going on this weekend? Any announcements for the good of the group or the city?
This is the Wichita Open, started yesterday, super excited. The amount of economic development that it brings for the community, but also community pride and just one more activity for our folks to get engaged in. Lots of people do come from out of town, so that means they're staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, filling their cars up with gas, maybe shopping a bit besides just enjoying the open. So if you have an opportunity, if you haven't been before, it's just a fun event, supposed to be great weather. And then also Sunday is Father's Day. So happy Father's Day to everyone. Thank you.
And also because I know you, also I know we can do it any of us here, but the Academy's parade is decided, Juneteenth celebration tonight, tomorrow, and December.
Yep, parade starts at 10:00 tomorrow. Love to have people come on down and check it out. Aside from that, I appreciate everybody showing up today and everybody have a good and safe weekend.